Good evening. This is the January ninth edition twenty twenty five of the Planning Commission meeting and happy to be here tonight. As always, nope, we start with the roll call. Or do we start with the? According to the new agenda, we start with the roll call. Let's do that.
We'll start with Commissioner Inga.
Here.
Vice Chair McGee.
Here.
Chair Heschler.
Oh, that sounds weird, but I'm here.
Commissioner Christian is absent and we have quorum.
Okay, all right. As always, we start with a pledge of allegiance. So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. And we start by asking about public communication. This is a chance for anybody who has something to say that's not on the agenda, they would come forward now. And seeing none, we'll close public communications. Is there other, we do have the written communication that came in for the topic tonight. Is there anything else?
Correct. No, no other, no other topic. And as a result of this, this was posted on the city's website. There were a couple tweaks made to the, the agenda and that was revised, that revised agenda was redistributed. So that's both online and distributed to the community and the council and commission.
Great. Okay. Thanks, Eduardo. And item A consent. There's nothing on the consent this evening. So next we go to public hearings and I don't believe there are any public hearings.
Well, it's technically a continued.
A continued. Okay. So.
Public hearings, that what we have because if, as the commission may recall, the next item, which is under unfinished business under section D, that originally came before you or was, was originally scheduled to be on, on the last planning commission, I think December twelfth. It was noticed for that, that commission. As a result of some comments, we asked that the commission continue it to tonight's meeting and that was done.
Okay. So that's now labeled as D unfinished business.
Correct.
C, there's new business. I assume there's nothing for that tonight, which takes us to D unfinished business. Tonight, we are continuing the zone text amendment regarding right of way dedications and fees, accessory dwelling unit standards and fees and public notification requirements for certain ordinances. And we have a staff report. Paul?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. The, the, the item involves new state laws that were enacted in late twenty twenty four that affect the three areas that you just listed out. The new legislation goes into effect January this year. So this is why we've prepared the draft ordinance so we can complete those code amendments as early in the year as we can. The following slides will summarize these new state laws and the proposed changes to the city's zoning regulations. I will go through each of those laws specifically and do a quick summary on how that affects our zoning regulations. And with that, I'll proceed to the next couple of slides. Already went over this. So the first law, AB twenty five thirty three, provides for legalizing unpermitted ADUs and JADUs that were built before twenty twenty and also exempts those ADUs and JADUs from the development impact fees. The ordinance, you know, was revised, was drafted to reflect this, these new state law requirements. The SB twelve eleven law, this particular law. The existing ADU law already allowed removal of garages and carports without requiring replacement. This new law extends up protection to uncovered parking spaces. So we amended the provisions regarding parking spaces and the replacement. The, the law also removes the owner occupancy requirement from ADUs. However, it does remain for JADUs. And the ordinance was amended to reflect that. Now, on December twelfth, we received some comments regarding the ordinance and on the next slide, I'm going over a section of the law that was not fully addressed in our previous version. And since we received those comments and we reviewed them, we reviewed the law again. And we've updated the ordinance for your consideration. So in summary, that same law established four sort of subsets of ADUs attached and detached that receive sort of special streamlined processing. They are exempt from the city's development standards with the only exception being some specific standards in the state law itself. So the ordinance was revised since the last time it was in your packet to reflect these provisions of the new law. If you have questions about that, I'd be happy to take them now or later on in the presentation. The next law prohibits land dedication on housing developments for the purpose of road widening, except under specific circumstances. The law defines some related terms such as housing development, dedications, roadways. And our ordinance is amended to reflect those particular requirements in the law. And we also took the time to clarify a couple of things, including when the city requires dedications in general, what triggers the dedication requirements.
Paul, can you maybe give us a couple of examples of when that might have happened? So we've seen right of way dedications for commercial properties.
Yeah.
Has, have the city ever required a right of way for a residential project that you know of?
We do require that for projects. Yeah. There was dedication requirements, for instance, for the Pacific Commons Coast, Pacific Coast Commons project.
And that, that was probably based on a traffic study, right? That said, you're gonna create this traffic and therefore you need to add a turn lane or, or things like that.
Actually, it was, it was because the, of our current general plan circulation element requirements. They required certain streets to be widened. And when there's new development of a certain size, that's when the dedication requirement is triggered.
Okay. And that is no longer going to be the case.
That is a little bit different. We, the, for residential projects, this new law sets specific circumstances when they, when the city can require dedications. So maybe I'll go into a little bit more detail on that so that it can give you a better sense of it. So the, the new law has sort of three general provisions about when dedications can be required. Number one, the city can require dedications for residential projects when it involves widening the sidewalk, for instance, if there's a substandard sidewalk, or if the city needs to do some sewer line improvements or something like that. But not for the purpose of widening the actual roadbed. So the city could, in theory, for a residential project, take, you know, a few feet to widen a substandard project, but not widen the road itself.
So make it safer for pedestrians, but not increase traffic.
Perfectly permitted by the new state law and the city can require that for every residential project where it's needed. If the city wanted to widen the roads, you know, in relation to a new development project, it would have to conduct a study, specific study that shows that this particular project is triggering some sort of a safety concern to pedestrians or cyclists or children, you know, maybe if it's a project near schools. And then, and under those circumstances, the city could require widening the road. But the city is not allowed to require widening the road just because its circulation element says that we, we anticipate this particular road to be, you know, sixty feet wide and it's only fifty. So we're gonna just widen the road because it's in our general plan. The state law prohibited that sort of course of action. So it's kind of limited when the city can take dedications for residential projects.
Paul, will, will those requests be approved at the city staff level or at the planning commissioner level?
The, the dedications are usually required when a project requires discretion and a review by the planning commission. So whenever there is an application for a site plan review, that's when, that's the trigger for looking at the road widths, looking at the full right of way width and requiring dedications. So yes, the planning commission would see those projects and review those dedication requirements. Yeah. Okay, great. I'll move on to the next set of laws. And this is a short presentation, just as the second to last slide here. AB twenty nine oh four requires a public notice period of twenty days for ordinances affecting the permitted uses and zoning ordinance or in a zone. So our ordinance was drafted to address that particular state requirement. Today, for all public hearings, we require a ten day notice. So in the future, for for ordinances affecting permitted uses or zoning ordinances in general, we will be requiring a twenty day notice. The next law, SB nine three seven, deals with development impact fees for residential developments and the timing for those fees. So basically, the state law, in order to facilitate housing development, prohibits the cities from charging these development fees before the certificate of occupancy is issued or not. You can't do it at the time a building permit is issued. You have to basically wait until the buildings are constructed and they've requested a certificate of occupancy and then the city can require payment of those development impact fees.
What is historically, what, when does the city ask for those?
Our, our current code doesn't have a specific timing, but our practice has been to require payment of those fees at the time a building permit is issued.
So it could be a couple of years before you get those development agreement funds. Is that right? Is that, is, is the city stressed about that?
I mean, I'll just, I'll, I'll add that the development impact fees generally are tied directly to, actually, I shouldn't say generally, they, they are tied directly to impacts that are created by the project, which theoretically do not happen until the project is completed, right? So I don't have a lot of angst over not collecting it until, say, final conditional or certificate of occupancy, when the building's gonna be occupied or at the very end of the build out because realistically, the services that those fees are intended to cover aren't needed until the project is done and occupied and in operation. So.
What about something that you need more lead time on, like a traffic light or something where?
Those, those things generally would be a condition of approval or, or they would be a mitigation measure in the applicable environmental document. And so that would actually have to be completed. That's not the same thing as a fee.
It'd be funded differently than the development agreement.
When we take a fee in lieu of an actual improvement like a, a signal or, or something like that, the onus is on the city to, to do that. And usually, the city, because one project cannot be held responsible for upgrading an entire intersection, that they are not the only one responsible for contributing to, say, a, a reduction in a, in a service level. So usually what the city does is they do what's called a fair share contribution. We'll take, you contribute twenty five percent of the increased load capacity and so we'll take twenty five percent of the cost from you and we'll wait for the other developers to do the same thing. And then when the city either A accumulates enough of the funding to do the improvement or uses that funding and just allocates general fund to a capital to a group of project, then the city will move forward with it. So I don't have a lot of angst over it. It's just sort of one more thing we have to keep track of before we sign off on final projects that we have to do. Yeah, we have to do it at the back end. Sorry, that was a long answer, but.
No, no, no. That's, that's instructive. Thank you.
Okay. So that was the last set of laws that I meant to cover. So just in conclusion, these zone tax amendments will bring our zoning ordinance into compliance with the current state law. They are consistent with our housing element because they remove barriers and facilitates housing development. And they are exempt from sequel review because they only involve changes in procedure or minor regulations. So with that, we recommend that the planning commission adopt Resolution twenty nine sixty, recommending city council adoption of the draft ordinance. And that concludes our presentation.
So I just want to confirm that all these are made strictly to bring, all the changes are made strictly to bring us up to to, to reach such requirements.
Mm hmm. Yep.
Right. So new, new laws were passed late twenty twenty four. This new language reflects that, to put us in compliance. And again, the point of the state is to try to reduce barriers to, to housing development.
Yep.
So, so really, there's really not too much to debate tonight other than, or, you know, does the language sound right? And I'm sure Joaquin has looked at this a lot in, in his office. So, yeah, as long as we're kind of discussing some of the nuance of this stuff, can you go back to SB twelve eleven? And the, and the ADUs? There, there's, there's two issues there. One is about existing development and then others, the others about proposed development and they kind of have different numbers there.
Yes. So the, one thing that I, I think I just, I, I should have gone over in particular, but one of the things that the, this law does, it does change some of the density limits on ADUs. So in particular, for multifamily properties, for detached ADUs. Today, the municipal code and the state law says you can have up to two detached ADUs on a property.
Detached from the main structure or from, from themselves?
Detached from the main structure, yes.
But those ADUs can be attached themselves?
Each other, yeah. The new law says that if you have an existing multifamily structure today, someone can propose up to eight detached ADUs on the property. However, the total number of detached ADUs can't exceed the existing number of multifamily units. So let's say you have a a five unit condominium building. You can propose up to five detached ADUs on that property that has that existing five unit structure.
Do you know if there are any existing projects in El Segundo that could accommodate that sort of development? And, you know, all I can think of is someone taking away a parking lot and saying, but according to the law, they can, it's okay to get rid of the parking now, right?
Yeah. There are many multifamily properties where this could potentially occur, yes. Because, you know, we've just from my time here, we've dealt with a lot of three unit condominium projects or four unit condominium projects. So in theory, somebody could come and put up a couple of, or maybe more ADUs on those particular properties.
But they'd still have to meet FAR requirements and, you know, the regular land planning procedures to make sure those things actually fit on the lots.
The, this particular law, the other aspect of this law is creating these, this subset of ADUs that exempt them from some of the other local standards. So let me go to one of the extra slide that I have here in the presentation at the end and go over that with you. While he's doing that, basically it says, there are state standards for height, setback, square footage on the state level and a local agency can impose its objective standards as long as they fit within that state standard envelope. So if we're not within that, then we're preempted.
Meaning the state's rules.
Supersede ours, to the extent ours are more, more strict than those, as far as objective standards. And we can only impose objective standards.
Right. And, and I think also to, to speak to some of the experiences that we've had at our, at our planning division with ADUs, to your point, and, and Paul addressed the FAR issue. Yeah, that is one of the things that, that, that is superseded by state law. So even though, you know, we would normally include that into FAR, specifically if we look at a property and they're currently at or exceeding FAR, they could still, they still have the ability to bill an ADU. And the state law has some certain provisions in terms of, of, of size of ADUs that they could still construct irrespective, you know, or regardless of whether they comply with FAR or not. To address your, 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 your inquiry about the, you know, properties around town that could accommodate for additional ADUs, multifamily, what we've seen a lot happen is a lot of conversions of, for example, of existing carports, existing detached accessory structures, storage structures that are being converted. You know, especially when you have these large apartment complexes that may have like laundry rooms or they have the separate detached garages. You see those areas that are being converted. Again, they comply with state law and we're very limited in terms of what we can do. And, I mean, if we could, if we could figure out some sort of way to put some objective standards and present those to you, we would, similar to what we did with SB nine, but then who knows what happens down the line as we, as we learn from.
So let me play this out. Let's say you're, you're renting an apartment and part of your lease includes a one car carport in one of these structures you're describing. And then the developer says, you know what, we're gonna get rid of all this parking and we're gonna put in, you know, five more units here. Can they just say that to the tenant? I'm sorry, you can't park here anymore. You're kind of on your own. Or does that have an effect on any, any of this stuff?
They can, they can say that to the tenant as long as it's not a, in their lease, you know.
Right.
Requiring them to provide a.
But if it is there, if, you know, if their lease includes a car in a carport.
Yeah. They'd have to wait until the lease expires.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay.
Or select another carport to do it.
Yeah, right, right.
But yeah, but ultimately, you know, I think the lesson here though too is that even if they were to do that, one, you know, whether they wait or, or, or convert in a, a, a carport, at the end of the day, we cannot require them to then, you know, provide a new space.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, and the state has, has gotten to that point where they do not care.
So just, you've probably told us a dozen times, but I forget. So what's the, I guess, the, the square footage distinction between the, the ADU and the JADU?
The JADU, number one, is, is required to be within the existing square footage of the residence, the main residence, and it cannot exceed five hundred square feet in size, the JADU.
Oh, so it's part of the main residence.
Yeah. But you can have more ADUs on the property. So you could have a JADU, that five hundred square foot unit, but then you can build another attached ADU that follows other requirements or a detached ADU.
So you can convert an, a, an attached garage to an ADU, but then you can build another freestanding attached or detached ADU?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So, okay. So the, on twelve eleven, so the up to eight units for an existing project, but then for proposed projects, you only get two. So what's the, what's the rationale behind that?
I think, I, I suspect that the rationale is that the state said, if you have dense parts of the city, that's, it's appropriate to cram more units there as opposed to proper areas of the city that are not as dense or that are vacant. That's the only sort of reasoning that I.
And, but, but proposed, proposed could certainly be infill and in a.
In a dense neighborhood. Yeah. But that's the only thing I can suspect.
I couldn't, I couldn't figure out why, why those numbers were different.
Yes. And the question arises that once somebody builds a multifamily structure.
Oh.
Doesn't that become?
It's existing, right?
Yeah.
Interesting.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay, all right. Have you, has the city seen demand for some of these things that are being described here?
Well, we have a lot of interest in, in construction of ADUs in town. In fact, it's almost exclusively the housing activity in town for the last few years. So there is a lot of interest in ADUs, generally speaking. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, you know, every year we have, you know, something like twenty ADUs built or permitted, something around that amount.
Yeah, I believe that.
Some of them are on, on multifamily properties, just like Eduardo mentioned, where a carport is converted or some sort of a accessory use or structure is converted. Most of them are on single family properties and we get a lot of those ADUs that are two story are two-story, uh, and have a garage on the bottom and the living space on top.
Okay.
We'll see what happens with this, uh, change in the density that allows up to eight. This is brand new, so, you know, we'll see what, how developers or property owners respond to it.
Okay. All right, thanks, Paul. Any other questions, guys? Um, so we will make a recommendation and either approve it or not, and then it goes to city council for, for their approval. And then are you, are you racing the clock to get this approved since the state law went into effect now?
We want to do it as soon as possible, you know?
Right.
But, uh, if there's any, you know, reasons to make amendments or changes to it, you know, we'll take the time and do that.
Okay. If I may, uh, Mr. Chair, yeah, we have to abide by it anyway, so, um, but it's good to, to paper it on our end and update anything. I just want to note for, for the record, um, Eduardo mentioned earlier, based on this comment letter that's been distributed and made publicly available, that there, there were some changes, um, to the ordinance, uh, from the original published agenda. And it was just, uh, some citation cleanup, uh, in section six of the ordinance regarding ADUs, um, and references in section fifteen dash four A dash one. With that said, um, all of those citations have been updated to the government code. Basically, there, there was one section in the government code for ADUs, a following section for junior ADUs, and everyone's been comfortable with those since, um, all this new ADU legislation, but for some reason, they decided to recodify those, uh, numbers. So we have those new code sections to, um, get familiar with, but, um, same language, um, and just the numbers are updated. It was made publicly available by staff and so, um, any motion for approval, um, should include that, the updated version.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, I will say, um, you know, between the December letter from the California Housing Defense Fund and now, um, you know, the city making all those corrections, I think is a good thing. I'm just impressed that the, uh, Housing Defense Fund is able to go through all these documents and find all these, I mean, they're doing that for every city in California, right? So, I mean, it's.
I'm not sure, but, uh, they're definitely paying attention to our ordinance.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, uh, with that, um, I would accept a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-nine sixty recommending city council adopt an ordinance, amending El Segundo municipal code provisions regarding residential development right-of-way dedications and fees, accessory dwelling unit standards and fees, and public notification requirement for certain ordinance- ordinances, and that is, uh, also incorporating the latest changes that were made recently but are now reflected in the, uh, in, in the document that's either available on the web right now? Is that, it's publicly available now? Okay. So, so with that, I would take a, uh, a, a recommendation for motion.
I will move.
Hi, Secretary.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Inga.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Guy.
Aye.
Chair Heschler.
Yes.
Motion passes three-o.
Great. Thank you, Paul, and thank you for the city for, uh, for pulling that stuff together. And city attorney's office, of course.
Yeah, it's, it's funny, uh, because we did, they did a lot of cleanup bills because there's a lot of loopholes, but we tried to, you know, take advantage of those loopholes and now it's, it's cleaned up, so it's all pulling into place.
What do you mean, we try to take advantage of the loopholes?
Not, not take advantage, we, we wanted to make it more stringent.
No, I think that's.
Maximize local control.
Yes.
And the cleanup is never over, actually.
Yeah, it is. Cleanup on aisle seven.
We're going on, yeah, this started in twenty-seventeen, I think, really? And we're, we're, you know, we're going on quite a few years here.
Yeah. Wow. All right, uh, with that, we move on to any, are there any reports from the community development director?
Nothing from me at this time, other than just sort of contextually, um, we're moving forward with reviewing the consultant teams for the general plan land use element update. Uh, and we're, we're scheduled, um, tentatively to go to council on, uh, February, double Twenty-eighth, yeah, thank you, Joaquin, uh, with a contract award. Uh, so we're still vetting the, the consultant teams. We do have a few top contenders, but, uh, we'll, we'll finish that up amongst staff and, and take a contract award to council February twenty-eighth.
Great.
Just so you can keep an eye out on it, um, the commission obviously will be heavily involved in that process. We'll have study sessions with the commission at the time, um, throughout the, the couple of years, uh, and will likely have a member or two, uh, of the commission part of a sort of designated technical advisory committee or steering committee amongst staff and maybe other commission members from other commissions to sort of drive the process. So, um, that will, that, and that will probably occupy the, the vast majority of staff time for at least a couple of years outside of sort of our normal day-to-day stuff.
Right, good.
Mike, Michael, how many res- responses did we get from the RFP that, uh, that it was put out?
We received eight responses, um, and eight highly qualified, capable firms. Uh, I was impressed with the, the responses that we, that we got from, from, uh, our RFP. It was, it was a good response, it was good, yeah.
Nice. Okay, great. Commissioner reports, I guess I'd just like to start by saying that acknowledging the tragic, tragic situation our fellow Angelinos are in right now. And, uh, these are, these are crazy scary times. Um, I, I guess I just really feel lucky, fortunate that we here in El Segundo are, um, safe for now and, um, but hearts go out to, uh, to, to everybody in the situation, so it's, it's, it's tough.
So I guess I continue that note, I did see that G's here in town is doing a donation drive that goes till midnight tonight, so do whatever you can to help, please. And since, you know, we've been talking about ADUs, if, you know, people will be out of homes, hopefully, uh, you know, people with ADUs can, you know, use them appropriately to help our, our, our neighbors as they can.
That's nice, that's excellent.
So, and then, uh, congratulations, Jay, on your first, uh, meeting. Well done, well done.
Thank you. And same to you, Kevin, as, as vice.
Right. Thanks, Chair.
That, that's all I have.
Okay. Mario, anything?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, city attorney, do you have a report?
Yeah, I think it is time. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. All right, and with that, uh, we are adjourned to the next meeting, which, uh, I should know this, but I'm sure Jasmine does?
Yeah.
In several weeks, two weeks.
Twenty-third.
Thank you. January twenty-third will be the next, uh, next meeting. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.